For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we pray blessings upon the proceedings of this Board of County Commissioners this day. May the members of this Board and all Craven County officials see their authority to govern as a sharing of your authority, O heavenly Lord. And to this end, may the deliberations of today and always support the right of every citizen of Craven County to share life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And may our nation's motto, "In God we trust," be more than simple words, but rather the true spirit in which our great nation and county are governed. We ask that you continue to be present to this great nation and county and to answer our prayers by your great love. Amen.
Amen. Before we get started, I want to recognize an individual. We have a seating Commissioner from Havelock, Jim Corr, Jim Welcome, and his son, is it son, right?
Yeah.
You've changed a little bit in the last couple of years since last time I seen you. Oh, and his wife and daughter. Thank you for both being here. Jim, thanks a lot. Approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda for minutes of May 6th, tax releases and refunds, social services released for Take-A-Kid fishing, Quail Woods Phase II Section, lots three and four final, write-off of water receivables, local government, Federal Credit Union budget amendment, and request to set public hearing on June 3rd at 7:00 PM for the purpose of receiving input on the FY 2019-2020 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that item E be pulled for discussion.
Item E?
Write-off of water receivables.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
Okay, item E, where would you like to set it?
Where, I see we got Miss French here, and, um, you know, wherever we can do it.
Okay, let's prove the consent agenda minus E, and take E and put it right after that. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Okay, let's bring up 1AE, write-off of water receivables. Commissioner Jones, if you'd like to.
Yes, if Ms. French, the chairman, would allow for her to come up.
Ms. French?
Two things about my reasoning for pulling item E. Number one is, um, it is expending, um, if I was correct, somewhere around $22,617. And, um, that, and then also under, um, uh, the bottom there, talk about the change in procedure. If you want to just give us a little background, just so we'll know.
Well, last year, the Finance Department did come to us and want to know how we did our write-off procedures. Um, I gave them my notes on how I actually do it. I go through at the end of every calendar year, and I begin to look at the previous year. I go through every single account individually. I look for anybody that's on the account, if they have a new account, anywhere that I can move that money. Then we go through a program called LexisNexis that will go through and buy a social security number, try to locate those customers, and we send them a letter. Um, we do have quite good returns on that because a lot of people, they may have just moved, didn't think about it, you know, thought they were done when they terminated, but they do have that final bill because we are behind in billing because you have to use the water before we bill you for it. So, a lot of people, it may have just been something they missed in moving. Um, a lot of the larger accounts, we do put into the, um, Finance Department does that for us, and the IT Department, where we can attach their taxes, and we do get quite a bit of funds from that. These are ones that, based on the generally accepted accounting principles, they feel are uncollectible. Um, we actually do, anytime we set up a service, we check people's information to see if they have another account, see if they owe us any money, see if there's anything with that account where, you know, we are able to get those funds from new people setting up service. Um, but these are the ones that either we did not receive anything back when we sent them that letter, or, you know, they have moved from the area.
Okay, so the change in policy that is going to occur, I mean, um, is going to be put in our policy, I mean, by passing this, I mean, we're authorizing that to happen?
Let me, if I may clear, I think this is confusing, and I think I probably at fault for not bringing this out. If everybody pulled out Attachment 1E, and that's dealing with the Department of Finance matters, this procedure was approved back in February of last year. This was related to what we had already had approved last year. So, the manager put this in here and highlighted it because when our audits came through, we were having such a large amount on our books that we had to bring it in there. That's what was confusing here. It shows 88,000. We got 88,000 since '13 owing us from the water. But the procedures and the policy was approved last February. And again, I question this as well, but on the agenda of February 19th of 2018 is when we approved that, if you look up from the top of the, when it was addressed. So that just, he just put that in here to show that of when we do it. What this is actually doing is letting us know that she has to write off 22,000 some odd dollars for this year.
And this was actually from calendar 2014?
Yep.
That's 22,000 that's been determined that's uncollectible. Have we, and I was listening and reading while you were talking, have we, um, turned this over to a professional collection agency?
Honestly, about eight years ago, um, I've been working here for 11 years, we tried to send it through a collection agency, and honestly, we found better luck with doing it ourselves through LexisNexis because the collection agency, they only got funds from what they collected.
Yep.
Um, there was a lot more before that point, and like I said, every day, we're searching for that money. It's not something that we're just, you know, oh, they owe us money. I take this very personally. This is, you know, my department, this is my money, this is where we are able to do the things that we need to do to have water for the customers. And, you know, this is something that we do take very seriously, and we do understand that it's not a small amount. However, we are about at 96% of our receivable rate.
Well, that's great, and I appreciate your dedication, enthusiasm to doing it. I guess my point is, at some point, if we say, hey, that one is gone, what would we lose by giving it to an agency? Maybe they can get 10% of it, of those that we've given up on. Just a thought. Those people, I've used them in the business world, and they're, they go after the people in a way that you and I wouldn't. And you can say, well, that's not good, but at the same time, those are people who are not paying, and so maybe that's what needs to happen. Just a thought. I'm not asking you to do it, I'm only asking you to consider it.
Ms. French, let me interrupt you there. Let me get to manager.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Booker, to your point, it is in a program called Debt Set Off, which is a collection agency the state of North Carolina set up for any municipal governmental funding. And just because we're writing this off doesn't mean we're going to stop collecting. Matter of fact, I got a nasty letter from a gentleman last week who owed vehicle taxes from 1985 and got his state income tax withheld this year because he finally got an income tax return. So these stay on in perpetuity. Some of it will be absolutely uncollectible. I think between the efforts of what Ms. French is doing and the state debt set off, we're hitting them several different places to make sure we get our money.
I know if you can't find them, or if they've died, or whatever, sometimes it's just gone. I clearly understand that. But sometimes, these tough collectors can go after it and get some money. So it's just something that, I appreciate that, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I'm good.
Okay. Entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
1E?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, Craven Community Child Protection Team Annual Report. Sans is, and I might even try.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Thank you for having Jean and I here. We're both co-chairs of the Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team, and we want to give you our annual report. We sent you a cover letter with all the information in regards to mandated members of this team, so we'll skip right over that part of it, if you don't mind. Um, so in 2013, I'm sorry, 2018, uh, the team reviewed six neglect cases, um, which consisted of 27 children. The majority of those, um, came to our attention due to substance use and mental health issues. Along with those, some of the other barriers and gaps were housing, poverty, transportation, um, that contributed to the neglect in those cases. In 2018, we had a very high number of reports that came in, 1,140 reports of child abuse and neglect was reported to the Department of Social Services. Out of those, 729 met the statutory requirement for us to assess or investigate those families. And of those, um, 263 children were found in need of services, either through in-home services or foster care services. And again, substance use was the leading cause of children being abused and neglected in our county. We put together, um, I forgot to put that one up there, sorry. So we put together some data just to look, get a snapshot of the last four years of what our numbers looked like. And we're pretty consistent in the reports we're receiving, right around that 100 mark, and that's average per month reports that we're receiving of abuse and neglect. The second number is the screening number, which is those reports who meet the requirement for us to go out and investigate or assess those families. And the last number is, oh, I'm sorry, screening report, and the last one is how many were accepted. We had an increase in 2018 of how many reports we actually went out and accepted, um, found that we needed to investigate. So we did have a higher number there. Again, uh, these are the contributory factors. Substance use, you see, was 57% the cause of this. Uh, parent mental health, second, domestic violence. The other, um, is cases where there were sex abuse, it was child mental health, it was poverty. Those were the other contributory factors for it says other, the 17%. Again, we're tracking how many babies that are born with drug exposed, being drug exposed, and pretty consistent, again, there, unfortunately, it has, did go up last year to 34 babies who were born positive for drugs. And we are, that's an automatic CPS report, we have to assess that family for safety before the baby's released from the hospital. CPS in-home services, that's where we did find the family needed interventions after we assessed the home. The numbers, um, 2016, you see, were pretty high, 2018, 49, and last week, I was speaking with in-home supervisor, and there are about 60 cases right now of in-home, um, families. And when we say 60, that's the number of families. That could be a family with one child to a family up to 10 children. There could, um, so it's not just 60 kids, 60 families. Foster care statistics, um, we have seen a huge increase, as you'll see in another slide, of children who come into care. 2018, we had approximately 99 children, or 99 children were in foster care. 49 left foster care, so that is a plus. And when they leave foster care, it's usually reunification, either with the parent, family member, adoption, guardianship, that's how they leave. But we had 80 children who entered foster care. That's a lot in one year. We said it's probably one of our highest numbers. Um, and again, if you look at the number of children in care, 63 of them, again, were due to substance use. If we can get this opioid epidemic under control, you're going to see a huge decrease in our numbers, um, in child welfare. So it's a huge, um, issue that we need to deal with. We have approximately 28 licensed foster families, and you look at that, you see 99 children and only 28 foster families. We don't have enough foster families to meet the needs of the kids coming into foster care, which is causing our children to have to go to private agencies, um, be placed out of county, um, which is not in their best interest. So we are working diligently, um, to recruit new foster families. The reasons that our foster families are leaving, um, they're moving. A lot of them accept permanence of the children in their home, and so then they close out. Uh, some are child-specific, meaning they get licensed just for a specific child, it could be a relative, um, and then family reasons, which could mean, you know, health issues in the family, just various reasons they decide to terminate. Resources provided, we actually increased our resources last year, um, and families receiving those in, um, resources. So nurturing parenting, which is our main parenting program that we provide, 64 parents participate in that, which is up from last year, I believe it was 20, it was a 20% increase from last year. The domestic violence group that's being offered for men and women, we had a 50% increase in attendees for that, for the men's group. Trauma focused treatment, trauma assessment, SPARCS, those are all in the Women's Path to Recovery, grief and trauma intervention, those are all evidence-based programs that we're providing to our community, um, for those in need of those services.
Can I ask what SPARCS is?
Yes, it is structured, uh, shared.
I got it. It's a structured psychotherapy for adolescents responding to chronic stress. So it's a 16 session group with kids, with adolescents, about how to cope with the stress that they've been impacted by.
Yes. We shouldn't use those acronyms. Um, grandparents raising grandchildren, we had an increase in those numbers as well, people participating in the groups that are being offered. So a lot more grandparents out there in our community that probably need this support, um, and may not be aware of that service, so we're trying to get that information out. And I'm going to turn to Jean with this. Any questions on that part of the presentation?
Just a question on, how do we go about, what's the goal or the plan to get more foster parents? Is there a procedure in place to try to do that?
Yes, sir, there is. There is what's called a diligent recruitment retention plan that we submit a report, our plan to the state every year. This is the first year that the state's implemented this, where we submitted a very detailed plan of how we're going to do that. We've reached out to the faith community, we've been providing presentations in the churches, organizations within our community. We're going to be, we've got some other plans in place, but we do have a plan, an active plan we are working to recruit.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can I go back to the reports of abuse and neglect?
Yes, yes, sir.
There were 1,140 reports of abuse or neglect. Where do most of those reports come from?
All throughout the county, sir. I don't know the geographic location, is that what you're asking me?
No, more or less. Who are the people that are reporting?
Oh, who are the reporters? Um, the reporters are typically neighbors, family members, school, we get a lot, you know, from the school system.
And 729 met your statutory requirements?
Yes, sir.
Or the definition of, what is the definition?
The definition is, is that they have to have, um, like if it's a physical abuse, then we have to have some type of physical injury that they're reporting. Um, if it is neglect case, let's say inappropriate discipline. If a parent fakes their child, that's not a CPS report. It does not rise to the statute of what North Carolina says. But if there's a bruise on their body that's been there for at least 24 hours, that does meet that requirement. If a child under the age of six is left home alone, unattended, that's an immediate response, that's a neglect. Um, those are some of the reports that we're receiving. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, I'd just like to ask a question or concern. A lot of times, um, when a baby is first conceived in the mother womb, and then she carries, and then he finally is born, then the baby, if she was on drugs, sometimes the baby takes some effect of that himself or herself. Do we have any way that we test these, uh, babies and see if they have this stuff in their system before it gets too late for us? If we don't, maybe we see these kids begin to get different types of problems and sickness. So what will be done about that?
Um, the hospital has a protocol that they follow. If a woman comes in that appears to be high-risk or is known to be substance user, then they will test the baby. If the baby's born and showing signs of withdrawals, they'll test the baby. But they have a protocol that they follow for that.
Suppose the baby's not tested, and the baby grew up, as he's growing up, he kind of get, you have different action from ordinary child. What happens then?
Unless they come to the attention of the DSS.
Say it's five or six or seven years old before he's noticed by anyone.
Well, hopefully by the time they enter school, and if they're having some difficulty, then the school will notify, you know, mental health or DSS if it rises to that level. So that's how we will become involved. We wouldn't know otherwise.
Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, if we could go back to the, not, I'm having trouble following the numbers. You're saying 263 children were found to need some sort of in-home or assistance or placement, and yet when we were looking at the stats, I didn't see 200, I didn't see 263 children in there. We could keep going.
It would be...
Right.
Right here. Because that's the average monthly of how many that we're working with on an average month. That's what those numbers are. I'm sorry if I...
Okay, so some may come in and come out.
Right.
Okay, that was, now, does this reflect children who were placed privately or outside of the county? So if, if you, I'm making, if 200 needed assistance and 150 can be assisted here, but 50 go someplace else, that 50, not all those.
So with the 263, those numbers are in-home services. That means the family resides in Craven County. We, DSS found that that family had abused or neglected their child, then they get the in-home services through our county. Only if they come into foster care or they need a therapeutic placement, are they sometimes placed out of county due to a lack of homes.
Do you know how many had, or do you track how many in 2018 had to be placed out of county?
I do not have that number. I can get that for you if you would like.
I would be interested in what's the impact on children of our lack of foster families?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can do that, thank you.
I would like to do that.
Any other questions for this portion? I would, Jack, if you could. We didn't get any of the graphs in our package, so if we could get our, if we could get the graphs sent to us.
Okay, sorry for that.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As with many counties in the state, the Child Protection Team is combined with the Child Fatality Team. Um, and so the Child Fatality Team reviewed 11 fatalities last year, and the causes are listed here, seven due to medical genetic-related complications. Many with, were born prematurely, 22 weeks gestation, 25 weeks gestation, uh, lack of brain development, and things like that. So that was the majority of the fatalities. Two, uh, the two fatalities were due to being unrestrained in a car, and they were, it was a teen and a child who were in the same car and collided with an 18-wheeler. And one was due to unsafe sleep, and one due to choking on a toy. So our recommendations from the team is, are that we want to continue education and community awareness on safe sleep. And the reason we put that there is just this year, between January and April, we have already reviewed four child deaths due to safe sleeping issues, or lack thereof, I should say. Um, so we also want to encourage medical providers, DSSs, well, DSS has it, Health Department, Pediatrician's Office, to use their TV marquees in the waiting rooms to show safe sleep, proper sleep, safe sleep habits. Also, using the money provided by the state to continue to purchase pack-and-plays and car seats. And then we talked about encouraging the local fire departments to expand their hours and more, um, communication, expand their hours so that folks can have their car seats safety checks. Um, you know, maybe on Saturdays, maybe in an evening, once a month, to make sure that majority of people can, can be there as well, those who may work different shifts, things like that. Additional recommendations are, and we had this on there last year, was to help support and fund a jail navigator to address the opioid crisis. And that would be someone who, if someone came in and was incarcerated due to substance use issues or had substance use issues, this nail jail navigator would be like a case manager, and they would help link that person to available resources in the, in the community to seek treatment. As, okay, we also have the, continue to fund the Dicks Crisis Beds that you all funded last year, and we appreciate that. And, um, you know, looking for possible additional detox capacity. Continue to advocate for mental health and substance use services. Um, that's been a challenge, that, and the next one of recruiting additional mental health psychiatric providers. That has been a challenge in eastern North Carolina to try to attract psychiatrists to come here. And we've, Trillium has even increased their reimbursement rate to, for psychiatrists to help be, help attract them, and it's, hasn't been successful to date, but we want to keep continuing to try that. And then, continue to prove the sufficient funding for the Department of Social Services. We've had some accomplishments this year, and so we wanted to share those with you. Some of the things that we've done is we had two state consultants come down from Raleigh and train the team on their roles, responsibilities, and the processes of completing a good, solid review, child fatality review. We also had a gentleman who had lost his mother and daughter to suicide come and talk to us and train us on things to look for and things to do to maybe help minimize someone's choice, or, or action, I should say. We continue to provide grandparents raising grandchildren community support groups. There's one at the Senior Center, and then there's one out in Cove City. Is it Cove City? There you are. Okay, Cove City, yes. Um, and those are well-attended. Also, can, uh, the DSS continues to provide a Women's Path to Recovery and Grief and Trauma Interventions, which are two trauma-informed interventions that was funded initially by Trillium. And the Safe Sleep Campaign, we have distributed 14 pack-and-plays and 25 car seats, uh, throughout last year. Child abuse prevention awareness activities, what we've done in the past is we've focused all our efforts on child abuse prevention during Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is April. So what we would do is have this big kickoff in either Havelock or New Bern, and what we found was that they're attended by professionals, and we really want to reach the community. So what we chose to do last year was develop a calendar of events and, and do, uh, child prevention activities throughout the year, and outreach to different areas, not just New Bern, but we've, um, developed a PowerPoint talking about child abuse prevention with some slides about safe sleep, and, um, with the intent of going to places like Harlow, uh, and then the western part of the state, the county as well, like Grantsboro and all that, and go to where the people live and present those things to the community, rather than just focusing on one of... just focusing on one event for the month. So we've, we've got that going on. And also, due to the hurricane, we had to cancel the Embrace Recovery Rally, which we would have been the third annual, so we're focused on that this year, as well as a parenting cafe with Craven Terrace. So we're working on that. With that said, we want to thank you, Commissioners, for all you do to help support this effort and for the development of the countywide task force, of course, the financial support of DICS beds, and for your continued funding and support of DSS. And then, at the, last year, you financial, you gave financial approval for the purchase of educational brochures for substance use prevention. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to share them with you, that, what we use the funding for. With that, that is actually the end of our presentation, unless there are questions.
Any questions from the board?
I do, Ms. Chair. Going back to the trial seats and encouraging the fire departments to have, you know, monthly, weekly, we'll check your car seat. You haven't tried to install one of these recently in your car. It takes an engineering degree, not a bachelor's, masters with it. The word, what can we do to put some metrics on that one or to put some gateways? Like, every fire department has it once a month and it's advertised on a marquee, because this is the, you know, if you have it every Saturday, but the community doesn't know it's every Saturday unless somebody's going to pull in there and say, hey, can you check my car seat? It doesn't help. So how can we organize that? And this is a question to the county manager, not for answer today, but from a community safety perspective, you know, go down on the third Saturday and they'll help you do it.
And be trained to install it.
And trained to install it, but also have something, you know, on the marquee, every Saturday we do it, or whatever. You've got to get the information out there, but it's also got to be somewhat organized to do it. Because it's, I mean, sometimes, you know, and I've seen it happen over, think I have it put in there correctly, and it's not. Because like I said, they don't have their master's engineering degree from NC State with it. So could we look at some way to institutionalize that and communicate it? Especially for new parents. I mean, they get a lot on their plates as it is.
Yeah.
And I got to make 14 calls to figure out which ones open. That's a lot to ask.
Sure.
Manager, can you go back with us? Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anyone to come down to the fire department to train the farmers how to do this training, to seats? Because we don't have nobody in the hollow area, and people haven't asked about that. So can we get someone down there?
Yeah, I think we'd have to find out who would be able, who would be able to train that, because we don't, you know.
Who'd have to go out and find out about this?
I think the fire department really has the, don't they have the folks who train in how to install?
They're supposed to get certified in it.
Right.
I know a lot of, volunteer fire department don't have this, so I don't know if it's paint fire department or what.
I don't know, Commissioner McKay, but we can certainly find out.
I know New Bern, New Bern have it.
Yeah.
Check, check out that side.
They do.
Well, probably going to contact the New Bern Fire Department and ask them, could it come down, have somebody come down and train our guys how to go through this.
Well, won't we make the suggestion, have the manager get with our emergency services manager, come up with an idea for our volunteers instead of going outside for right now? We have to, we will, but let's let the manager work that issue, if that's all right with the board.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Manager, I have one for you.
Yes, sir.
If you could get a package of their complete package, because we only got about a quarter of what they've presented in our package.
Yeah, we're going to send this to you.
Because some of this is going to come up during budget, I can tell you that right now. That we need to know that.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Before I move on, I don't think Mr. Flowers has anything on the agenda other than what was just presented. Is that true?
I think he'll be with us a little later.
He's going to be with us?
But not only, not on this part of the agenda.
But he's going to be with us?
Yeah.
The date, at this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I won't go there then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Department Matters, Emergency Service, Dover Fire Truck Resolution, Mr. Stanley Kite.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and I'm presenting a resolution trying to get, and I think you have a copy of that resolution in your package, but it's having to be amended as we speak, because it gives the appearance that the town of Dover, and I'd like to correct that, the town and the fire department had separation several years ago, so the proper name for the fire department is the Dover Fire Department, but it's not the municipality of Dover, if you don't mind me correcting that. We're talking about a 1940 How JXP fire truck that was actually received by Craven County July of 1957. It was assigned out in the, in the, in the old Civil Defense Program to, at that time, the fire department in Dover, and it served many years up there as a primary truck, and as time and age went on, the truck ended up in the bushes. And they have decided to get it out of the bushes and try to refurbish it and make it a parade-type truck, because, I mean, it is, it is a 1940 How. I mean, everybody didn't have one of those sitting in their back building, but they've been taking care of it for all these years, and it's time for us to get it off our assets. I would certainly ask the board to favorably recommend adopting the resolution so that that transaction can take place.
I would make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Park, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Lyne.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and the county attorney has the original title.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Sheriff's Department, Jesse Pittman, administrative captain, budget amendment capital outlay, budget amendment fuel. We'll take one at a time, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for allowing me here to speak to you this morning. Obviously, I'm not Captain Pittman, he's behind me. He looks better than I do. What I'm here today for is two requests for two amendments, as you stated, sir. The first one is for a capital outlay of $22,000. This budget amendment will allow for the payment of three outstanding invoices for upfitting of six, not three, six cars, dot budgeted for under the capital outlay expenditure line. These cars were ordered last budget year and needed to be outfitted with reliable equipment and marked with graphics and bar lights to increase the safety of life for the officers on the road. These include lights, radios, decals, consoles, cages, and of course, the labor to perform the upgrades. Ready for the second?
Okay. Receive a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? I do.
Got it.
You're saying now these are six?
Yes, sir.
So the six is covering 22, the $22,000 is covering six cars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't have an itemized list for you, but I can get that for you.
Well, I mean, that comes out to about 38, 38 per car.
Yes, sir.
My question is, these cars are already done, correct?
Yes, sir.
How, my understanding from the sheriff when he took office, that he was going to take some cars that were unmarked and make them marked?
Yes, sir.
You've known about this for some time.
Yes, sir.
Why are we now just getting this? They already been done. The bill is in, and you don't have the funds to pay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, there were four lieutenant's cars that were unmarked under the previous administration, and Sheriff Hughes has chose to mark those cars for a life-saving issue and also for high visibility in the community. There were also two administrative cars that were the silver that Sheriff Hughes was looking for, for his future road cars that were unmarked, and he took those. Bar lights had to be put on those cars. We had some monies in maintaining repair equipment, and what we were going to do was pay for the old cars upfitting through maintaining repair equipment, but by the time they were done, we had some expenses that were, took the monies out of maintaining repair equipment. And when I did the original budget amendment, I wanted to budget it under that, but since it's part of a fixed asset, they, they requested that we budget it under capital outlays going forward. When we, when we looked at the budget and, and went, me and moving forward, we initially thought that we were going to have the money to complete the project, but we do not. There were several repairs and things that came out of that repair equipment.
You see where I'm going from it?
Yes, sir, I understand.
We're, we're one month away from budget.
We're in and after, we're in and after, after the fact request.
This is, this is the fourth budget amendment that you've come forward. This work was done back in February and March, and now we're just getting it a month away from us for another budget amendment request. I mean, we're obligated. The budget's done. I mean, it's just sad for the people who are writing checks that we don't have money to cover, and you're expecting the citizens to pay for it that could have waited during normal budget cycle, and your budget is my frustration.
And now, sir, we haven't had the invoices since February. We just recently received.
Yeah, but still, you wrote, you wrote the check. You wrote the check. All right, we have a motion, second, no further discussion. Roll call.
Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Lyne.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. The second request is going to be for a budget amendment for fuel cost. The budget, this budget amendment is being requested to cover anticipated shortages in fuel line items for this fiscal year. Due to Hurricane Florence, there were two months that fuel costs were much higher than average, which contributed to this end-of-year shortage. There was a drastic increase in patrol operations and staffing shelters, multiple shelters during the FEMA and relief centers, as well as vehicle repairs. This budget amendment allows us to pay the outstanding invoices through the end of the budget years for $30,000. And I also like to add that it's increased patrol. Since the sheriff has come in, we have more folks on the road doing more patrolling, so we see enough of fuel.
Receive a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I do.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, yes, sir.
You may think I'm coming after you a different way.
Oh, no, sir.
This, this one here is well-deserved, probably, well overdue, because of what you had to go through for the storm and what you had to run back and forth with for everything. I think this board and the community fully understands what you had there and the, being out on the road as much as the sheriff is out on the road. I'm just hoping you have this figure in your new budget cycle, increase your cycle, so we don't see this again next year.
Yes, sir.
But this is, this is not an issue. I'm not coming after you on this one. My frustration is on the other one.
Yes, sir.
This one here is well-deserved.
I understand.
You need that one. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Lyne.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda, economic development, first right of refusal for building being purchased by KBC Partners, McCunkin and Pyle, Jeff Wood.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Just a little bit of background, this property is 120 Corporate Lane in the Industrial Park. In 2005, it was bought by Southern Apex. During that purchase, the county had first right of refusal for the property. McCunkin and Pyle's a project that last September, the commission, the board supported on a resolution and another packages there. So this is to allow them to close on the property as of tomorrow for as long as the commission moves forward on that first right of refusal waiver.
Receive a motion?
So move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
And I think I read it in here, I can't find it right now, but that we are still maining, we still maintain a first right of refusal for the future.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all.
Any further questions? Madam Park, roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Lyne.
Yes. Jeff, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on, airport resolutions to support terminal drive modification. Mr. Andrew Shorter.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Harris, good morning. Thanks for allowing me to be here. I think everyone's familiar with this. We've been talking about it for a few years, and then it was, you know, by engineering, airport engineering drawings, we had it in the slide deck that we reviewed a couple months ago. So basically, this is, seems simple to me. It's the state asking for support, for them to spend their money to reconfigure terminal drive. And I do have a visual aid here, a little bit clunky in size, not small enough to give to you individually, but not large enough to put on the slide. I can put it here. Basically, we're talking about putting a roundabout to provide two-way traffic for terminal drive instead of the traffic that normally comes from basically north to south, having to root itself in front of the terminal, creating some kind of pedestrian hazard. Right? Now that the public has seen it. Same thing, again, here's the, from Williams Road on this side.
Could you bring a little more, she's up in here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, Williams Road on this side, Airport Road on that side. The normal loop runs counterclockwise in front of the terminal. So what this would do, what we came up with, this is all in light of the 70 improvements that's going to direct more flow through this area. We already get a lot of flow through this area, certainly in the summer when people are trying to avoid the few traffic lanes in the Bay of City. So the only idea that we could come up with, if we put a roundabout right here, we can keep two-way traffic on that more or less north-eastern side of the airport. There's not enough room between the railroad right away and then what we have with the existing road to put a altogether different road in there. So they will construct this roundabout, and then that will provide the two-way traffic. You're coming to the terminal, you just take the roundabout around, and then if you're going north to south, you basically take the roundabout and stay on this side. Still allows traffic to get into the parking lot on this side. We also have parking lot entry on this side as well. So what the state has done, they found some high-priority, low-cost project money to get this started. We've already had the surveyors out, and that's what this drawing comes from, the surveyors, hence its funky nature and size. And this is the hardest impression of it right now. We are pretty close to getting the normal engineering drawings for that, from which I then have to go to the FAA, and this is a point you probably need to understand, the FAA still gets a vote in this, because most of this property was paid for in part or in total by the FAA money. So don't know whether or not they need to put it on the federal register to release that land, or if they're just going to be happy with reviewing the equitable or the environmental data and then releasing it within their regional office. They don't think it's going to be a problem, but it's just another step that we have to go through. Title line on this, surveyors have been out, they plan to have the engineering drawings done sometime this summer and get in to work on it by the fall, and it would be no more than six months to complete. The one piece of it while they're working on it, specifically when they do the roundabout right here, we will have to close that road, so it will be no throughway for a period of time while they do the roundabout. We won't do it for the whole project, but they do need that time. They could get it done much quicker than close this road and do the roundabout. The terminal traffic will still be able to come in from Airport Drive, you just will not be able to make from Williams Road to Airport Road come through.
Receive a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second. Questions? Discussion? Yes, sir.
Andy, when we talked one time, there was also discussion about a roundabout over on Williams Road. What's the status of that?
Yes, sir. Our plan kind of had three roundabouts tied together. Our plan kind of had three roundabouts tied together. There was one back here towards William Road that went more hand in hand with realigning Williams Road to give us more room for the runway extension. That is still in march. That is in as a stiff project, a strategic transportation investment law project with the highway department, as well as a roundabout on Airport Road to allow entrance into the terminal, which would then streamline all of this if you connected the three roundabouts together to use this.
So they're still in, we're still working toward those?
Yes, sir. Different lots of monies.
Okay.
Any other discussions? Madam Kirk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyon?
Yes.
Andy, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time this morning, and I appreciate the managers and the attorney's time as well.
Okay, moving on. Pending adult care, nursing home, New Bern planning, zoning board, Craven, Pembroke, Old Carrick, Regional Library. Let's go on through here. Fire tax commission. We got one, reappoint Carl Barwick, John Hawkins, and Chad Anderson. That's what town? Which township? Which commission is that?
Tax commission?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, John Hawkins is from Township Three in my district. I'm not, I don't know about the other two. I would recommend his reappointment, John Hawkins.
John Hawkins? John Hawkins is yours?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Carl Barwick? Barwick? Chad Anderson?
Have to research.
All right, we'll hold off on those. We got John Hawkins. If there's no other nominations, his replacement, we'll go back. Acclamation, if that's all right with the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a request that we list the township that these people are in in the future.
Yeah.
Y'all get that.
It'd be very helpful.
New Bern Board of Adjustment, reappoint John Pop Merle?
Yes, I'll appoint John.
You making that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other? Anybody else? By acclamation, he's reappointed. Trillium Health Services Board, David Creach does not wish to be a reappointed, no applicants currently on file. If I could ask everyone?
Can I, can I comment on that just a second to explain that? So Craven County gets one seat on the big Trillium board. Mr. Creach is an attorney, and that's what that seat is. We'll probably need to check with Trillium and see if that, but there is a statutory requirement for it being an attorney. But we need to make sure it's going to maintain that. You have a commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's you who's on there.
Yeah.
This is the counterpart to that, that's a private citizen.
All right, I'll get ahold of David.
Yeah, we need to check with David, make sure that's going to hold.
All right, now. Okay, the other one up there, the Craven, pending appointments, Craven, Pembroke, Old Carrick, Regional Library, that's going to be on hold hopefully until our meeting in June, our first meeting in June, we'll make a decision there. Also upcoming is a Airport Authority Board, there'll be a vacancy. I have an application on file now. I don't think it's got, they sent any other commissioners, so that'll be on the one June as well. And I think that's all the appointments we have. Okay. County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
One item for your consideration today. It is a final offer to purchase real estate acquired by the county through a tax foreclosure. The information is in your agenda packet, but for the record, it is tax parcel number nine oh four six one one five. We have an offer of $2,000 that the board tentatively approved earlier this year. The bid has been through the upset bid process, and there have been no upsets. The statistics on this property, taxes and costs foreclosed on, were $2,344.21, and the current tax value is $4,730. If the board approves this matter, we will finalize the transaction this week, get the property back on the tax rolls and the funds back in the county's budget. We do recommend that the board approve this.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that, that's a pie-shaped lot, isn't it?
Do not have the map in front of me, but it is.
Is that the reason why it's?
It, it's one of those, it doesn't even have a parcel or a postal address, so it's a.
Yeah, I think, I think I looked at the map, and it looked like a pie, you know, triangle.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, next on the agenda, County Manager Report.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have some really exciting chairman, I guess, County Manager privilege here. I wanted to make you aware of something I think's really special. And the gentleman, I'm going to ask step forward, Kent Flowers, who's our DSS Director. As many of you are aware, Kent has announced his retirement at the end of this month, but in doing so, I also have another bit of information. Kent was just designated as North Carolina DSS Director of the Year last month. I was able to go to Wilmington when he was recognized, and let me tell you what, Kent is a star among his peers. I always say I'm blessed here. I've had the Tax Assessor of the Year in Mr. Antry, Tax Appraiser of the Year, Health Director of the Year, and now DSS Director of the Year in the last 24 months, so I figure I'm doing pretty good. But Kent, Kent is, in my opinion, the best DSS Director in the state, and he is going to be truly missed, and he has worked tirelessly, those folks we talked about earlier, he has worked tirelessly on their behalf since 1982 in this county, and he deserves some recognition. So Kent, thank you for all that you do, sir. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I can pause for a second if there's any comments on that, or I can go ahead.
Any comments? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I would just have a comment that before I came on board as Commissioner, I went and spent a few hours with him and got a tour of the facility, met a bunch of his employees, and when you, when you walk through any facility, the real, the real situation does come out after you're there a while, whether people are smiling and excited about what they do, that comes through when you go through that department. So I knew after my couple hours there that what Jack just said was, was the case, so congratulations.
Any, any other comments? Kent, I'd like to say thank you. I mean, taken, put it aside that you're a lawyer, you're not really bad. Your people really appreciate what you've done and everything else, so everything you've done for this county and its people is greatly appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Warren, if you'll go ahead, I'm going to give Craig's second, hand you your 2019, and Ms. Parker, your 2019 and 2020 proposed recommended budget. I think we need some, some background music as we're doing this, it seems a little too. If you'll turn your, your book open, I believe it's under the first tab, there should be a budget message in there that I'm going to go over with you. So Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I am here today to present to you the fiscal year 2019, 2020 recommended budget. It is my privilege, as always, to present this to you. As proposed, this budget incorporates some priorities and policy direction of the Board of Commissioners while continuing to provide the highest quality of services to the citizens of Craven County in the most fiscally responsible method, manner. Proposed budget is balanced, recommends that the ad valorem tax rate for the fiscal year 2020 be set at 55 and a half cents per $100 evaluation. The current ad valorem tax rate of 53.94 cents has been maintained for the last three years. This increase is recommended in order to address the increased fiscal needs of the county at an unprecedented time when the estimated property valuation has experienced an overall decline resulting from damages sustained during Hurricane Florence. The recommended general fund budget for fiscal year 2020 is $110,858,621, and includes a fund balance appropriation of $21,000 to balance the budget. Although the recommended budget includes a fund balance appropriation, local governments are strongly encouraged to maintain adequate fund balances in order to ensure against unanticipated events that could adversely affect the county's fiscal financial position and jeopardize the continuation of county services. Craven County continues to budget and operate in a fiscally responsible manner, providing a fund balance sufficient enough to accomplish this while remaining consistent with that of our peers statewide. Craven County's available fund balance was 28.71% of expenditures at June 30, 2018, while other counties with over 100,000 population fund balances averaging 27.66%, and then all 100 counties averaging 29.35%. As we approach upon a new fiscal year, the county's financial position continues to remain stable. Total revenues for the first 10 minutes of, first 10 months of the current fiscal year are 2.5 million ahead of last year, while total expenditures are up approximately $3 million for the same time period. The county continues to experience positive growth in commercial and residential development within our urbanized area, along with continued increases in sales tax revenue. Sales tax collections through April are currently trending 6.8% higher than the same time last year, providing an optimistic economic outlook heading into the next fiscal year. Better-than-projective revenues received from other sources, including the Medicaid sales tax, hold harmless distribution, the sale of 509 Broad Street, and increased investment earnings have also contributed to the county's enhanced financial position while offsetting the increases to expenditures. Expenditures and transfers out for the first 10 months of fiscal year 2019 are higher in most functional areas, most notably in the areas of general government, health, economic development, and public safety. Some of these increases are one-time costs, such as the county's emergency response to Hurricane Florence and the floor repair at the convention center. Others are reoccurring, such as the implementation of the salary study this fiscal year and the addition of behavioral health services at both Health Department's FQHC clinics in New Bern and Havelock. The county ended fiscal year 2018 in a strong financial position, adding approximately 1.2 million to the fund balance. Higher-than-projected revenues, along with the county's conservative approach to spending, provided the ability to transfer 1.8 million into the Capital Reserve Fund last fiscal year. Although we were able to make a transfer in, approximately 1.1 million was used toward budgeted capital items and projects netting an increase to Capital Reserve Fund balance by approximately 854,000 at June 30, 2018. As we've experienced this past year, funding of the Capital Reserve when excess revenues or savings are realized continues to serve as an important part of the county's financial position and provides for future needs while helping to prevent tax increases and borrowing costs to fund capital items. There are a number of factors that had significant impact on the proposed budget, including those of Hurricane Florence. The current assessed value for the fiscal year 2020 is estimated to be approximately 9.36 billion. That is a decrease of 0.64% over the estimate of 9.42 billion used for the fiscal 2019 budget and projects a decrease of 1.58% over the actual valuation of 9.51 billion reported for the current fiscal year as of December 31, 2018. Although this decrease is expected to be temporary as recovery efforts continue into the new budget year, this decrease equates to an estimated loss in property tax revenues of approximately 811,000, without including any growth in the tax base. If you were to factor in the growth in the tax base experienced prior to Hurricane Florence, the loss of property tax revenues is actually 1,384,000 heading into the fiscal 2020 budget. For this reason, it was decided to defer the upcoming 2020 revaluation for one year until 2021 in order to allow time for recovery efforts and market stabilization to be completed. Total revenues and expenditures each amount to 110,858,621 in the recommended budget for fiscal 2020. This represents a decrease of 9.9 million or 8.2% compared to the current budget of 120,764,255 through the end of April. The majority of this large decrease is attributed to Hurricane Florence appropriations and school debt refinanced during the current fiscal year. Property tax revenues in the proposed budget are up by 2.2% over fiscal year 2019 budget amounts due to the recommended 1.56 cent tax increase, while sales tax revenues are 8.9% over the amount budgeted for 2019. The amount budgeted for sales tax next year was projected using a 5% growth factor over the last 12 months of actual seats, receipts collected. Consumer confidence remains strong locally and around the state and is expected to continue into the next fiscal year. Transfers to the general fund from the Capital Reserve are up approximately 848,000 from the current budget. Capital expenditures and major repair projects were closely examined, and only as a result of the Capital Reserve Fund, most were able to be funded. Overall, capital outlay costs are up approximately 182,000 compared to the current budget. Out of the total 3.6 million dollars in capital expenditures budget for fiscal year 2020, 2.4 million is funded with transfers from the Capital Reserve. The majority of capital expenditures funded in this budget include the maintenance and replacement of vital infrastructure in the areas of technology and facilities. In addition to the capital items funded in this budget, the county is planning for several major projects heading into next fiscal year. One of these is a continuation of the county's Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, software replacement project. Phase one of this project included implementing a new financial system. With the accounting module completed this past year, the focus next year will be directed toward the implementation of the payroll, HR, and permitting modules. Phase two of the project will include replacement of the tax billing, collections, and appraisal software. With the delay of the 2020 revaluation, it was decided to move this project up in order for it to be completed in time for the 2021 revaluation. The county's hurricane recovery efforts will continue with the restoration and improvement of the convention center and courthouse buildings. Budgets for these projects are currently being developed and will be funded mostly with insurance and federal disaster grant funds. Other major county projects programmed in the fiscal year 2020 budget include replacing carpet at the Health Department, expanding the parking lot at the animal shelter, installation of a new camera system at the jail, lighting for three tennis courts at Creekside Park, and replacing the roof at the Human Services Complex Building, which is the DSS and health facility. The proposed budget includes one recommended fee change for the county's curbside recycling program. The current fee is $36 per year and includes weekly scheduled pickups of 18-gallon bins. The proposed fee is $60 per year and will change the pickup schedule from weekly to monthly using a 95-gallon bin. The change in this program is due to decreasing global demand for recycling materials. Over the past several years, this caused recyclers to pass down higher fees to customers in order to offset increased collection costs and lost revenues. Not only has this had a significant impact on Craven County, but also on many communities across the country as well. Total salaries and benefits in the recommended budget are 1.8 million higher than the original budget of 2019 and does not include a cost of living adjustment for county employees. Approximately 385,000 of this increase was for positions added during the current fiscal year. Those included one Assistant IT Director, one Clinical Social Worker and Processing Assistant in the Behavioral Health Program, two School Resource Officers at JW Smith and Roger Bell Elementary Schools, and one Animal Shelter Attendant. There are 12 new full-time positions recommended in the fiscal 2020 budget, and they are as follows. Two Deputy Sheriff Transport Officers, four jailers, one Budget Analyst, one Assistant Solid Waste Director, one Natural Resources Conservationist, one Income Maintenance Caseworker Two, one Social Worker Two, and one Social Work Supervisor Three. Total benefit costs are projected to be approximately 875,000 higher than the current budget as a result of increases in the county's health and dental premiums and the retirement system rates. So far this year, health and dental claims have been running slightly below last year's levels. However, a 5% increase at a cost of 373,000 is recommended. This increase will apply to both county and employee premiums and takes a proactive, instead of reactive, approach to providing additional stability, stability in the self-insurance fund while reducing the need for higher increases to premiums in future budgets. The retirement system employer contribution rates were increased in the budget by 1.2% and account for 450,000 of the total increase in benefit cost. This is a significant change from the incremental 0.25% increase previously planned under the retirement systems employer contribution rate stabilization policy. It is anticipated that future increases will be based on this new incremental rate, which will remain the same through fiscal 2022. Overall funding for Craven County schools is recommended to increase by 790,000 or 3.4% over the current year's budget and continues the county's investment and support for our local system. The budget challenges faced by the schools continue to be complex and varied, and while this recommended increase works to address the most current challenges, it does not address them long term. As revenues from federal and state sources tied to enrollment numbers continue to decline, the cost to operate and maintain these shrinking schools does not. This issue will be ongoing and will likely need to be addressed as we plan for the future. Current budget challenges faced by the schools in the upcoming budget year include increases for retirement system contributions and healthcare premiums, in addition to decreases in federal and state funding as enrollment declines. and state funding as enrollment declines. Forecasted numbers by the schools predict the decline in enrollment to continue over the next four years in all K-12 areas. In addition to funding these increases, the budget also recommends increasing the local supplement by half a percent to 9% at an annual cost of 300,000 in order to meet the school system's priority of improving teacher recruitment and retention. Capital outlay requested is 1,994,967 dollars, the same as the current year's budget and includes one Category 1 project over 100,000, which is a gym floor replacement at West Craven High School at 160,000 dollars. Also included in the capital outlay amount requested is 894,967 dollars, which continues the second year of the funding for the three-year Apple iPad leases that we did a couple years ago. The proposed budget funds Craven Community College, requesting current expense at 3,761, $61,115, which represents an increase of 213,000 over the current year. Part of the increase includes 67,000 towards additional personnel costs for salaries, retirement, and health benefits. The budget also funds portions of the yearly allocation for both the Volt Workforce Development Center in New Bern and the new STEM Center building in Havelock. The Volt Center was funded at 50% in the current year's budget, however, will not open until May of 2019. That allocation will be carried over by the college in fiscal 2020. The recommended fiscal 2020 budget funds the remaining annual allocation of 47,500 dollars, with the expectation classes will begin this summer. The STEM building is expected to be completed in October of 2019 and was funded at 67% or 82,667 dollars. Both of these new additions to the college will be reoccurring in future budgets at an annual cost of approximately 250,000. Capital outlay for the college was again retained at 500,000 dollars as agreed to previously, with half of the funding coming from the county's Capital Reserve. Okay. The proposed fiscal year 2020 budget provides balance of fiscal responsibility in addressing the many needs across the county while continuing to maintain the lowest tax rate possible for the citizens of Craven County. Craven County values the competitive edge maintaining a low tax rate offers in areas such as economic development and retirement locations. As always, there is still the possibility that the General Assembly may take actions that could affect the county budget. We will continue to monitor for those potential impacts. However, I believe Craven County continues to be well-positioned fiscally to address any challenges that may come forward. I wish to commend the department heads, staff, and agencies for their cooperation and valuable assistance in this very difficult budget process. I would also like to thank our Finance Director Craig Warren. Craig?
Thank you.
Assistant County Manager Gene Hodges. Gene, thank you. And Human Resources Director Amber Parker for their essential contributions in developing this budget. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners and finalizing the fiscal year 2020 budget. The recommended budget shall immediately be available for public inspection in the county manager's office, and it will be posted on the county's website. I recommend the board schedule a public hearing, 7:00 PM on June 3, 2019, and conduct budget study sessions beginning today as required. Respectfully submitted by myself. And usually, we'd ask for you to call a public hearing, but we actually do that on consent agenda today, so there's no need for any action at this point. I would tell you, we will be coming back this afternoon. We intend to start on the fire departments, which is in the back of your book, and then tomorrow morning, I understand Mr. Chairman to begin on the general fund balance for the county. I'm available for questions or save them for later, sir. Your choice.
Let's do it while the public, we've got the public here so they can understand what we're going through. Any comments? Anybody have any comments, any questions or anything they want to bring up? Man, I want to bring up, I want to make sure that the public understands, is aware. What you have presented us is what we have asked you to present, and that's a balanced budget.
Yes, sir.
That does not mean that this meets the needs of the county as far as what you need, as far as what we know we need, but you followed the guidelines of what we put forward to you. So, not everything is in this budget because you couldn't balance any other way. So, this board, as of about five minutes ago now, this budget belongs to us.
Correct.
On that. So, we've got some work ahead of us of how this board wants to proceed.
Yeah.
And what actions that we need to take, and I think the public needs to be aware that we'll have to look at everything of what's out there because we're in dire progress. We've got a lot of unknowns that we don't know.
Correct.
Both from FEMA, both from the state, and other issues that we know we have issues and problems with. So, this is not a done deal. This is what this board has asked the manager to bring to us, and now it becomes our issue. Sir?
If you will, share with our citizens and also with us, if you can, remember how much money did we pull out of our fund balance for Hurricane Florence? And also, what have we received as of date from FEMA?
Go ahead, Craig. Yeah, come on.
So far, we have spent approximately $3 million for direct expenditures, and we've also had about another half a million through additional operating costs at the convenience sites. And year-to-date, we've received some insurance money of approximately 1.7 million.
Do you foresee, do we have any still outstanding bills for Hurricane Florence?
Yes, we are wrapping up the debris invoices right now. We're finalizing those. There were a couple that came in that we needed to kind of go back to the hauler or to the contractor and get those certified properly, but they're coming in as we speak.
Do you have an estimate of what you think they might be close to?
For the debris? I think we were looking at maybe two, two and a half million, I believe is the latest estimate. Gene is at the center about right on the debris.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to piggyback on Commissioners. Let me quit. No, no, no.
No, that would bring us over about 5.5 million dollars then for the hurricane.
Yes, so a lot of the building repairs will be covered under insurance. What's not covered under that will submit under FEMA projects. We're trying to get the easiest ones off our plate first, which would be the debris. That, if you recall, went into much later than we anticipated. I think the final pickup was in February, in January, and then we had a couple that they had to come back and clean up the rest in February. So, we're currently waiting, getting all those invoices paid so we can submit those projects.
Piggyback on Commissioner Jones, I don't think you brought up, my understanding, you've got insurance money, but we haven't got our first nickel from FEMA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I want to make sure we understood that.
And the insurance funding is just estimates at this point.
Right.
When we finalize and make the final repairs, we'll have the invoices to submit, and then we'll get whatever's remaining owed to us.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Manager?
Thanks for your questions, Commissioner Jones.
Okay. Thank you. So, that's all we have. We do have a closed session in the meeting, but other than that...
We've still got more on the agenda here.
Yeah, you still got, yes, right, you got a couple lines, yeah.
Yeah. Then we will. Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda, resolution regarding House Bill 602. Commissioner Jones, I'll turn that over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposed resolution that is being presented to the Board of Commissioners is passed by this board. Would ask the North Carolina House of Representatives to override the governor's veto of the Born Alive Abortion Survivors Protection Act. The North Carolina Senate, as you're aware, and it states in the resolution, has already voted to override the veto. It was done by bipartisan support. It had to have bipartisan support to pass. Now, it is before the House of Representatives, North Carolina House, and it also, again, would have to have bipartisan support to override the governor's veto. Fellow Commissioners, the Born Alive Abortion Survivors Protection Act, in my words, give a human being the right to life. And I'll say that again, gives a human being the right to life. Today is my little girl's seventh birthday. Seven years old today, and I was, last night, as I was looking at her and I was, as she slept, and thinking about my comments for today, that they would be the right comments and comments that would first be honoring to my lord, but also be understandable by the citizens that hear them. It brought me back to when she was born. Jennifer had a perfect pregnancy up until right there at the end, and we got to the hospital, and they had to do emergencies, do emergency procedure on her to save Emily's life. And how grateful I am that her life was spared. And she is a vibrant, productive, loving, seven-year-old little girl. This bill that has been passed by the House and Senate of North Carolina and the governor vetoed, you know, we can get into the debate about the heartbeat and so forth that is going on in our country, but that's not what this is about. This bill is about botched abortions, abortion that did not, was not successful, and the baby is born. And to leave that baby and not give that baby life is infanticide. I believe that. And, you know, I know this is an emotional debate across our nation. I've received calls last night already attacking me for presenting this to the Board of Commissioners, asking that I pull it. I'm not going to pull it. I bring it to you for debate. It's your decision now on how you proceed forward, but I think it's the right thing to do. The only thing I would ask, Mr. Chairman, before you entertain more conversation on it, is there is the last line of this resolution, and I probably, when I gave it to you, I probably wrote something wrong in here, but I think it would be appropriate to change, could be. It would be, be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the North Carolina General Assembly with a request for action rather than state's congressional representatives. That it be forwarded to the North Carolina General Assembly. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussions before, anybody have anything?
I have a question on this one. Normally, when a child is born, the parents have the right to determine what medical procedures will be enacted for that child's welfare, or whether this be a newborn, or whether a five-year-old child is receiving vaccinations, or whether surgery might be authorized by a nine-year-old. And the, I'd like to hear more, and I'm uncomfortable with the state taking away from the rights of the parents to determine what is in the best interest of their child. I realize this is not the same situation. It is a botched abortion, but on the other hand, I'm concerned over, is this, is it taking away from the rights of the parent to determine what is in the best medical interest of their child? So, I would be interested in hearing, and in its time constraint, it might not be an issue, but I'd like to hear a legal opinion over how that impacts, you know, the state impinging on the rights of the parents.
I think it probably is an issue that would require a little preparation and more analysis on my part. I will agree with you that there is the general proposition that parents do make healthcare decisions for children, subject, of course, to what I would call the right of the state in some cases to say this is going to be in the best interest of the child in all cases, and then also what I would call the exercise of healthcare providers' medical discretion, and not so much discretion, but the best practices that the healthcare provider would have to, you know, follow in many circumstances regardless of what a parent may or may not say. So, there are a lot of dynamics at play, and I've not actually read this bill, so I'm not familiar with the wording or how far it goes and how that would impact with those general concepts. I will be glad to look further into it and report back to the board.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say on this issue here, seems to me, what is happening, they're taking the rights away from the mother and giving it to the state. I think if someone be questioning me about what I should do when I go to my doctor, and they got to make a decision for me before I even get to the doctor. They don't know my situation, but they just assume what is best for me, or what is best for the individual. I'm a strong believer that everybody should have the same rights to choose if they so desire. I don't like to put my impression on what a person should do with his life, nor do I want someone to decide what I should do with my life. I had, I had prostate cancer one time, and I didn't find out till I went to the doctor. Now, if somebody tell me, say whether I be operated on or whether I shouldn't, I wouldn't have wanted them to have that authority. I want to make that decision for myself, because if I say that I don't need it, then if I die early, that's my own fault. If someone else can decide whether I need it or not, then they'd have taken me completely out of the picture. And I'd be a person should be, should be the governor of their own body as long as they are able to make that decision. And we can't judge people because if we do, unless we bring back something else somebody remembers, that anything can happen to you anywhere, and you don't know who going to have to come to your rescue. I had a situation such as this as I was in Raleigh, and I realized how all the people that I met, Republican, Democrat, white, black, no matter, foreigners, but everybody treated me so well, and the county manager even went to the hospital with me. So, I believe in giving a person an equal chance, because I've been given, in my later years, equal chances. I had a little tough that one time, but the Lord has blessed me. When the devil tried to take me, the Lord kept me here, but he put different peoples around me to see that I would be all right. So, I believe in everybody having the authority that's able to make their own decision. And I, I just love women because I love my mother, and I want my mother, I want my mother to have all the opportunity, and my daughters, I have daughters and granddaughters, I want them to have the same rights that I have. That's all I have.
All right. Any other comments? If I may, I'd like to make a suggestion. I think, I think we may have gotten a little bit off track here on what this bill actually is. I would recommend, if the board will entertain me, that we all go back and take a look at this bill. We all have different feelings about it, and we may read it differently, but this bill is not about abortion. This bill is about a right to life of an individual who's already been born. Has nothing to do with abortion inside the mother, the bill reads, has already been delivered and put forward. So, I think we all need to take a look and read the bill, and I've asked this board, if it's all right with Commissioner Jones, that either we set a public hearing or we put it on the agenda at our next meeting for public comments to hear the public. Any?
I would support that, Mr. Chair. I have not read the bill, and I certainly need to...
I also support it.
...with it. If...
Commissioner Jones, is that, I mean, sure? Is that, do I need a vote, or is that good?
Yes, sir. Well, I broke my microphone. Sorry about that. Well, broke my microphone. Sorry about that. Got excited. We'll need clear direction on what your expectations are at the next meeting.
What would this Board like? Whether put it on the agenda for public comments, or put it on the agenda for a public hearing?
Can I advise you on that?
Yes, sir.
You know, public hearings very formal. You can have this as an agenda item with public comment. You're not, you're passing a resolution. This is not a law that Craven County will set. This is a resolution asking somebody for something else. We have a precedent of having public hearings on these type of things before. I think it's a fine line there. Certainly, your Board's decision, the Board's decision in that, but we will have to set it today. If you set a formal public hearing, it has to be in the paper, and we got to go through that whole step. It's up to you how you want to do that.
Well, I follow advice of the manager, but...
I would just think public comments would be the way to go. That way, anybody that wants to come and comment can come and comment, and we move forward.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, yes, comments.
Okay.
What we've done in the past, too, you can bifurcate the public comments period for anyone, you have a period of time for that subject if you have a lot of speakers, and then do everything else.
Yep.
Second...
We can do that. Is that all right?
Leave it all in one nice box.
Is that enough guidance? Do I need a vote or anything?
No. The only thing, if you're, you need to vote if you're actually calling for a public hearing. If not, then we're good.
Or just put it on there for public comments. We'll make it as a public comment. If that's all right with everybody.
And would you like me to include the bill in the next agenda package?
Yes.
Yes, please.
But I'd also like you to, if they haven't got it, send the bill out now, because it's thirty-five pages long, and I've read it.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find some analysis, if there's any analysis out there.
It's pretty, it's pretty cutting. It's long. On that. All right, we've got that one. All right, let's move on. Commissioners' report. Commissioner McCabe?
I don't have any report at this moment, Chairman. Save it for next meeting.
Save it for next... Commissioner Lamson?
Yes, I'd like to, I left some peoples off, and I was telling about the cleanup in my area, and you know how it is when you're trying to name people who was out there helping you leave a name out? So, I'd just like to include those names also, but I will be bringing that, some of the peoples that can come to one of our meetings and let them be recognized. But the names that I left up to clean up for Duffy Field, we had a overcrowded, overcrowded public at our cleanup. We had people that we had to even get other uniform, cleanup uniform, for them to go out and pick up trash. And some of the, I named most of the people the last time, but some of them I didn't name. This was Mike Avery, Mike Williams, who were at Habitat, him and some of his peoples out there. And Shaw and Bryant, who heads up, used to head up the history, history center downtown. And we had a great workforce, workforce out there, and they did an outstanding job. And the city, they come by and picked up all that trash. And that was, like I said before, a lot of people accused the people in the area of mess, doing all that, throwing all that trash out there and everything, but some of that trash been there since the storm there. And so, the city was able to get up all that. Some people still haven't fixed their homes up. We got a lot of peoples in the community haven't even received any front from FEMA. It was detrimental to a lot of communities in our area. So, we just appreciate all the help that everybody came and helped out in the community that they could, that we could together have a clean city and a clean county. I don't want to stop there. I want each of us to contain, if we happen to see trash, we could pick it up ourselves. But we have to be careful now, because everybody concerned about germs, and we used to, you would just go ahead and pick it up, but you need gloves on now, because you don't never know what contact you will come with some germs, because it looked like germs flow easier than it did a long time ago. But we just thank the community in a mighty way, and also thank them for the things they did during the storm. We had a great body of volunteers. I never saw anything in my lifetime that happened in this area that people worked so closely together. And I just, I'm just praying and hoping that we will continue to work together. As always say, you don't never know who you're going to need until you get on the bus. And those people say, well, I remember the time when he tried to embarrass me and keep on by you. That's a hard, hard feeling to take. So, I encourage each of us to continue to work together. We might not agree with everything each other say, or each other do, but we got to love each other anyway. That's all I have.
Mr. McCab?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
Nothing.
Mr. Booker?
Yeah, just one thing. Last week, Commissioner McCabe and the Chairman and the County Manager and I took a little trip to Jones County. We visited the new Jones County School. Jones County has three schools now. They're going to end up knocking them all down and having one school to serve K through twelve. This building will be ready to go, I think they said, in July. It's very close to finished. It is beyond my comprehension, anything I've ever seen in the way of a school. It is beautiful. It is technologically advanced, and they really put a lot of thought and effort into this project. And I was particularly impressed by the fact that the county leaders and the architect and the developer, the whole group, really thought through the needs for the future. And that being, we've talked about our new center we're going to have over here on First Street where we're going to teach the trades. They've provided for automotive repair, for, help me...
Carpentry.
Carpentry, for...
Masonry.
Masonry.
And welds.
Yeah. And, right, all these functions are all set up already in segments for the high school. So, anyway, it was a really good visit. At some point, we're probably going to need to build some schools, and I'm sure we'll maybe venture back out and look at that again when it's all done and running. The, one thing that was kind of neat was, they, the entire roof of the building has the cells on there to collect the energy from the sun, and they project that the school, the hundred percent of the school's energy needs will be provided by these solar panels. Plus, they'll be able to sell energy back to the grid. So, not only, when they look, they showed us a chart with forty years' energy cost on a normal building like that, many, many millions of dollars, which they're going to avoid because the energy costs are going to be zero. And then, energy costs are probably going to go up, but theirs aren't. So, it was, it was a really good visit. I went thinking, well, I guess this will be interesting. I came back very, very impressed with what I saw. So, hopefully, we can all go out there, when we get to the point of needing to get serious about building some new schools, we can all go out and take a look at it. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes. In the course of the year, I tried to visit the different precincts and town halls, and I attended the Bridgerton Town Hall meeting on the fourteenth at seven P.M. at night. And pretty much, I was surprised that for a small town of four-hundred-and-fifty-five people, they had about nineteen people in the audience. So, you know, it just, it's government in action and people attending to see what's going on, and it gives me an opportunity to find out what my constituents want. Basically, it's the same type of thing we do, pledge of allegiance, invocation, and consideration of board meeting minutes, and it ended up with a closed session, the same as we're going to end up today. Thank you.
Sir, I only have one thing. I just want to remind everybody, Monday the twenty-seventh, Memorial Day, eleven o'clock, National Cemetery here in New Bern will be having their ceremony, so everyone is invited for that. I would recommend getting out there early. Parking is at a premium. You may walk a little bit, but that's Monday the twenty-seventh at eleven o'clock. At this time, I would receive a motion to go into closed session.
I'll move.
I do not believe there's any actions afterwards for that. Is that correct? There'll be no actions coming out of the closed session. Okay? Got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Give us five minutes. Be back in closed session at ten fifteen. Let's make a break real fast.